Thank you. Thank you. Hi, I want to welcome you all for tonight's Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal. It's Wednesday, October 9, 2024 at 6:30 PM. And we are at room 520 at the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. We also have Zoom. Whoever wish to be on Zoom. I want to call the meeting to order. Make a roll call. My, my left, Mr. Christopher Conti. My right, Mr. Troy Larson. My next to me, to the right is our clerk, Jim Kabachi. We have on Zoom also Mr. Richard Sample and myself, the Chair, Nazir Al Qalasi. So we have some preliminary business to do on the minutes.
There's two different weeks of meetings of minutes, 9/11 and 9/25/24. We don't have the hard copy here with us, but at least two, if not three of us have reviewed them online prior to the meeting and were prepared to make a favorable motion.
Okay.
A move that we approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Jim to accept the minutes for 9/11/24 and 9/25/24. Do I have a second?
I second.
A second by Chris. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Nazir carries. All right, we have 10. Okay.
I'm waving at the screen. Richard, you can wave back at me.
Minutes. 5:00. All right, we're gonna go 30-20 Penrose LLC. Anyone here from Penrose?
I have one online.
Okay. What's that? He's online?
Online. On the window.
Can folks hear and see me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thanks for giving me the opportunity, opportunity to speak. I'll be very brief. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Rio Seketti. I'm a senior developer with Penrose here on behalf of the Ford Littleton Drive development, which we are calling Swift's Landing. I'm here tonight just to discuss the recent submission to the building department for occupancy on some, but not all, of the buildings. There's 12 total buildings. This is for six of them. I'm here to address the issue of the surety requirement that was raised tonight for the six initial buildings that have been completed. I'd just like to request that the board consider not requiring a surety for these buildings. The main reason being, we already have 100% payment and performance bonds in place for all of the work to protect us and ensure that all contractual obligations of the general contractor and any higher met. Additionally, the project has a total construction cost of approximately $33 million, and there is only approximately $500,000 worth of work remaining as of the end of September, so that's current, which is a relatively small portion of the project. We are withholding $1.5 million in retainage from the contractor, which further guarantees that all the final work will be completed. As an alternative solution, what we are suggesting...
Can I start?
I'm sorry, what, what was that?
Can I start?
Is that somebody online?
That's Rich.
What is it? Richard? Okay.
Rich, what's the matter? You can't hear it? What did he say?
I think he walked away from his computer.
I'm sorry, I walked away and then you heard my, my conversation. It had nothing to do with the case. Sorry to interrupt.
Continue, sir.
Thank you. So what we are suggesting is that the town consider issuing renewable temporary certificates of occupancy for the buildings. This would only be for buildings that are fully signed off by the building department, the fire department, any other departments that have jurisdiction. This approach would allow us to move residents into safe inspected units while also giving the town leverage it needs to ensure that the remaining work is completed in a timely manner before issuing any final certificates of occupancy, which would be once all the buildings in the project are complete. We recently conducted a lottery for the building, for all the buildings on October 4th. This is because there's a significant portion of the units which are affordable, and that lottery had a local preference. The sooner we can move residents in, the better, the better for us, also the better for the residents. I would just want to stress again that we're requesting TCOs only for buildings that are fully signed off as safe and acceptable for occupancy. And this would allow us to move forward quickly to start leasing to new residents. One other thing I want to mention, the town is still the landowner, the fee owner, and they do have completion requirements on us to build the project through the existing 99-year ground lease that requires us to build the project into certain standards and certain timeframes. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I can stick around if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Start by the board's questions. Troy, what do you have?
I don't have any questions.
Jimmy?
For clarification, six of 12 buildings, by memory, some of those buildings are senior, some of those buildings are affordable. Is that correct?
Correct. We have, out of the 12 buildings, there are 10 townhome buildings, which are the smaller buildings. Those are family. We have one clubhouse and management office, and then we have one senior building, which is the largest building. That's the mid-rise building with elevators.
Okay, so...
The senior, oh, I'm sorry, the senior building is not one of the buildings. That will probably be the last to be delivered.
That was my question.
You good, Jim?
Good. Thank you.
Christopher?
I'm all set.
Richard?
I'm all set.
I don't think we could do temporary just to CO. I'll ask, just for the record, I forget to mention, also present is Commissioner Turner tonight. Barry, just add this to the minutes. Commissioner Turner's here. Commissioner, can you issue a temp permit or no? Or just an occupancy permit period, right?
I'd much rather just issue the certificate of occupancy for the entire project. I spoke to the project manager this morning. So building 1, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 have passed the final inspection. The clubhouse has passed the final inspection. Building 2 and 3 should be ready for a CO on the last week of November. 4 and 5, the first week of November. And the senior building, the first week of November.
So the...
So they're only a month away, so...
Is it a temporary, or is it a partial certificate of occupancy?
They passed. The certificates have not been issued. We're waiting on a HERS report for each unit.
All right. Do we, do we have construction inspection from Allen Major? Do you have that, sir? Sir, what's his name?
Rio.
Mr. Rio.
Yes.
Do you have, do you have, do you have, are reports from Allen Major inspected the projects?
I did not receive a copy. Was that the engineer from Green Seal?
The engineer, our consultant. Did you guys, did, we haven't seen reports. Do you have the reports? Do you have reports from Allen Major?
I, I do not.
Okay. So how, yes, can you come forward, Mr.?
For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen Major. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify, we're not the record inspectors for this one. Green Seal Environmental is. They were conditioned under the original permit that was issued two years ago. So it would be...
Green Seal?
Green Seal.
And where is Green Seal report? Thank you, Phil. Sir, Mr.?
He used the word, I didn't get his name.
Rio.
Mr. Rio, where is Green Seal report?
I have not received them yet. That would be an item that I would also request be condition of, you know, a final certificate of occupancy either on the whole project or the last building. I want to add too that...
We need, for the file, for us to release whether partial or impartial, whatever it is, we need those Green Seal environmental, the, the firm that was retained to do the inspection. We need their reports. We need to say you built according to specs. We don't know what you did. We can't just give you occupancy without these reports.
Understood. Green Seal has been periodically inspecting the property all through construction. I can follow up with them.
Can you, can you get this for next hearing on the 23rd? We put you on for the 23rd.
Okay. I would like, thank you, Chair. I would like to add one item that it makes a big financial difference because of the tax credits. Getting a certificate of occupancy, even a temporary certificate of occupancy on a building October 31st versus November 1st, that could cost a project, an amount of tax credit dollars.
I understand. So October 23rd, we have no problem. Now, we also need the plan from you, how you're gonna fence the other building for safety, and Green Seal have to give us a report saying that securing the other two buildings or three, however many left.
Six.
Six buildings left for, we need to, we need a letter from them that you secure them properly. They need to go inspect, that you put a fence for construction, special entrance, all these things. So if you have all this report ready and you put the fencing or whatever measures, security measures, you take for the safety for, of the public from driving, walking around, because you're gonna have kids, you're gonna have elderly, whatever. So if you have these reports and everything in place, I don't see a problem that the board will entertain that.
Okay. Understood. Of course. Thank you, Chair.
So we'll see you, we'll see you, make sure, call the office and they put you on agenda next time on the 23rd, okay?
Okay. Got it.
Excuse me, Chair? Chairman?
Yes.
So we'd like time to review it. I would not want to have him show up during the meeting and have all that for us to review.
Right.
So if you can get it on the website or whatever he wants to do, a little easier than viewpoint, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so Mr. Rio, it's gotta go on, online, viewpoint, whatever, which way we use, but it's gotta be by next Wednesday, so we'll have a week to review it before the hearing. So it's gotta be end by the 16th.
He's nodding.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Understood. 16th, and then the next hearing's 24th.
23rd.
Was that right?
23rd.
23rd.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, very well.
Do we need to vote him to come back on the 23rd?
No, that's fine. No.
Preliminary business thing, okay.
All right, we'll continue, we'll go to the continue public hearing 5-24, 2544, 2546 Cranberry Highway.
And that's 2544. I don't know if he's in here.
All right, public hearing's still open. Counselor names and address?
Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street.
Attorney Coleman, 192 Forest Street, Wareham.
Bill Madden, GAF Engineering, 266 Main Street.
Okay, very well. Where'd we leave it last time?
Yeah, last time we...
You want the big one?
Big one.
Did not have, like, the engineers still needed to get together, according to you. You wanted to confirm the parking and make sure everything was squared away, so I think we were just finishing up the site plan. I know that Mr. Madden can speak to. I know he spoke to Mr. Cordero, and you want to speak to where we're at with that, Bill?
We submitted some revised plans in a, in a letter to the second peer review conducted by Allen and Major Engineering. I think we forwarded it to the, to the board on the 3rd last week sometime. We can go over those. Yes, that's, that's it. It was, wasn't terribly complicated to go through, but if you'd like...
Yeah, yeah, we want to go through it, please. Let's go through it.
Go through the letter?
Well, the notes, how do you, what, what, what did you address and what's hanging?
I think we addressed everything. I think the, one of the larger things was the, was the parking, to ensure that there was adequate parking for the, for the intended use, and I think that that has been satisfied on the drawings. We have the required number of parking spaces. I, I know that there was also a question at the last meeting about the architectural plan. The architectural plan is included with the plan set, so we were able to coordinate and confirm the office numbers, the storage numbers, things, things of that nature. But in any event, if we want to just discuss the parking first, the office area was 1,333 square feet, which I noted on the, on the as-built architectural plan. That one space per 250 square feet, that required six parking spaces, five point something, but round up to six. The three bays and the single lift required five spaces per, so three for the bays and, I'm sorry, five for the three bays and one for the, for the, for the lift. So there was 20 that was shown for that. The building commissioner looked at the size of that service, inside the service area, the waiting room was a little on the large side, so he asked that we designate one space per 500 square feet of that area for waiting area parking, which relates to, to four spaces. And then there were the display areas for the motor vehicles for sale, and the applicant had asked for eight, I believe, in the, in the application. So a total of 38 spaces were required and 38 are provided. So we were able to satisfy, at least I'm reasonably certain, we satisfied the parking concern that was, that was brought up at the last meeting.
Where, what, where is the curbing along the highway? And you don't specify the kind of curbing coming from the highway. Which plant is the curbing? Which page?
I don't, I don't think we provide the curbing from, from Cranberry Highway.
And what's, where is the curbing along the highway?
There's currently no curbing there. Never has been.
Excuse me? I'm asking him. Let him answer.
No, there is none that's there.
Okay, well, site plan requires it. I mean, we just ask Town Tavern to do it. It's gotta be granite, and the entrance has to be granite with the 50 feet coming in radius and 30 feet leaving. It's not here.
I understand that, and I, I thought that when we first were initiating the project that we were, we were looking at things not as a new construction project, but a change in the use, and that's fine.
It is a new, it is basically new because it's a completely new business. You're gonna tell me it's been open for a while? It was open without a permit. This place was a parts store, not a dealership, not a garage or dealer, so it has to comply unless you can convince the board, and we want to hear from Mr. Phil on that. Phil, can you come forward, please? What's with the curbing? This is the only thing I could see clear right, like, quick right now.
For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates. So Mr. Madden's correct in terms of how he presented it, that they were holding the existing driveway, so they were not presenting with new curbing. There's bituminous berm along the Cranberry Highway, so there's no granite curbing out there.
I understand, Phil. I know what, what, if he's presenting it, doesn't mean that's what we're doing.
That's understood.
I mean, there's something, you have to pick on this and tell us. It should be unless we give a variance for it.
So they, so, Mr. Chair, the, the site plan review requires that curbing is provided. It doesn't specify that it needs to be the vertical granite curbing that DOT would require for work within the state layout. So my recommendation is if you, they do provide, they do have curbing on site, they use timber curbing within the site, so they would be compliant with the zoning bylaws.
Timber, timber, and our bylaw says timber you could do?
It doesn't specify. It just says curbing. It says durable curbing. You, you know, you could argue that timber is less durable than other materials, but it doesn't exclude it.
I'll ask about, Troy, what do you think?
I kinda, I, I agree with you that we have to...
You unmute Troy?
I'm muted. I agree with you, Nazir, that we need to be consistent with what we're requiring for construction, so I, I think the granite curbing would be appropriate.
It's concrete or Cape Cod berm in the property, but coming in, just the radius coming in has to be granite, and along the highway. Jim?
I, I guess the only, I, my immediate reaction, my immediate reaction to this whole thing was, the guy kinda got skunked, but that was a lack of due diligence on purchase. That wasn't a lack of anything else, so I guess I can't really excuse too much. The fact that it's as close to that traffic signal, and that is Route 28, or Route, yeah, it is Route 28, isn't it? It's a state highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to kind of enforce the, the need for the curbing.
I don't, I don't think bylaw, our bylaw allows timber. Either Cape Cod berm, because every application during my 40 years of business here, we go for a waiver from concrete berm to a...
From granite to concrete?
To bitumins, to bitumins. Granite, you cannot waive coming in from the, for the highway. That's a state thing. Coming in has to be granite, but we always get a waiver from concrete to Cape Cod berms, but never to a, a timber. And what's the timber gonna hold for plowing? Christopher, while, while he's thinking.
Well, the timber's, the timber's, I think, within the property.
Within, within the property.
Within the property. It's not the curbing coming in.
No, I understand. I don't, I don't believe it's allowed. Go ahead, Chris.
I, I agree with you. I think there should be definitely some sort of curbing, whether it's, I don't know, concrete or the granite or the berm. I definitely agree with that.
Are you gonna repave the parking lot, right, Bill? They resurfacing the parking lot?
Well, we weren't looking at resurfacing the parking lot.
How's the condition of the parking lot, Phil?
So there were areas that, that were deteriorated, that would recommend improvement like we do on most applications, especially at the back of the site, they were deteriorated.
Okay, so what are you gonna do?
Well, in the back of the site, where we're, where we're repaving that, or where we're going to the great expense of providing the, the water quality structure, where the vehicles for repair are gonna be sited, where we put in the, the floor drain and the industrial wastewater holding tank for that floor drain.
Yeah, but you tell us the great expense, like, we should feel bad. Everybody does them. It's business.
They don't, that's, not to be disrespectful, but not everybody does do it.
Okay, don't do what you're not supposed to do. We're not asking you to do us a favor.
I'm not saying that you're not supposed to do it. I'm just saying that not everyone does it the way that we did it here.
Do what's minimum by the book, whatever the bylaw, I mean...
Well, we paved, we paved part of it, I mean, part of the parking lot, the park, the portion of the parking lot that is shown to be paved, is this, is this hashed out area that's shaded? It's on, it's on your plan set?
All right, didn't you, didn't you do Mr. Higgins last week?
Yes.
And didn't we require to rep the whole parking lot and redo it, and he's doing it?
We, we, we did the whole parking lot for Mr. Higgins because he exceeded lot coverage on that particular lot, and for us to bring it to, to compliance with zoning, we decided that we would remove quite a bit of the pavement there, place some landscape features, and bring the lot coverage into compliance with the zoning bylaw. So that's what we did on, on his lot.
Right, but we, actually, it was, the lot coverage there, it was okay because it's existing, but it could have been modified, but we made the guy, the gentleman, Mr. Higgins, remove it and redo it, and he was fine with it. And he did the curbing, he did landscape, everything. He didn't say, oh, I went out of my way to do nice drainage for you.
No, and he did, and, you know, as far as I know, he did the things that we, that we're doing here, to the extent that they apply to this project, they play, to the extent they apply to both projects.
So explain to me again, which one you're doing, or are you good, well?
If you go to sheet number 2 of 6.
Yeah, the galleys, the, the leaching galleys?
The leaching galleys.
Okay, what's your other choice? You don't have room for a retention pond?
Though those leaching galleys there are, are not just to accommodate storm drainage, they're to accommodate the high pollutant load that the site is categorized.
I understand. What was your alternative other than that?
We could have put in a, a water quality structure as opposed to the three compartment tank and infiltrated the water in the, in the general, in the same manner. We didn't really, we don't have the open space as some of these other lots, although, you know, it is quite a big lot. There, there, could come up with something that would have been probably as costly, if not more costly, to clear the trees and, you know, go deal with conservation and do things in the undeveloped portion of the site. So what we tried to do is, is do most of our work within the developed portion of the site, the active portion of the site.
Okay, so the way you did it, it saved from cutting the trees and making more stuff, right?
Yes.
Or conservation. So, so you did what you had to do. It's not like you did us, did the town favor, not us. It doesn't matter to us personally. I don't think the board matter, but...
Mr. Chair?
The issue was, is if I remember it correctly, is that where the cars that were requiring repair were to be parked outside, somebody brought that up, that they, they could be leaking oils, fluids of, of varying degree?
Well, the, the, the used car could be leaking. If we grant the used car license, anything could be leaking.
Well, typically, in, I'm not a used car dealer or whatever, but the ones that I have worked with and the ones that are permitted through, through the town here, most of the vehicles are repaired before they're put on the lot for sale.
No, but they're gonna repair them there. You, you, your office did the dealership for me. I went through, I jumped, God knows what they made, what you made me do on my, or your firm, not you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Richard would like to say something?
Yes. Anyway...
Richard has his hand up.
Yes, Richard, go ahead.
So, this, this whole story, I know that Mox had it, and he ran it as this gas station, I mean, the, the way he ran it with the inspection station and all that. And I believe that, and I understand the buyer beware, I, I do believe that these guys bought something, nobody knew, even the town didn't know that Mark was running it that way, so it's kinda hard for them to do due diligence if a guy's doing a business. And I, I believe that they've been trying to do the best they can. They've been spending money, they've been putting things in the ground for drainage, doing everything that we've asked, and we're arguing over some curbing. I, I understand the state curbing, but I would just like to see us give them just a little bit of a break. I mean, they are dumping a bunch of money, which they didn't plan on, and that's, some people have money that can do it, and some people can't, and I would hate to see them go down in the middle of trying to get this up because of the costs, just ran them out, which I find upsetting because, again, Mox ran that place, nobody knew, even the town didn't know that it wasn't permitted, and they turned around and bought it. And they turn around and bought it, and then all of a sudden, they get this handed to them. I would just, I would, I, I would think that we could be a little lenient here and there. That's all.
I, Richard, I do understand, but we have on record at the town, at the, at the building department, their attorney, prior to closing, three months, reached out and asked if this place has a permit and a site plan's been done. And it's right, in writing, the, the janitor at the department said there was no site plan approved for this place. It's not licensed to be a garage.
Mr. Chair, man, we know that that's a separate forum, and, and we can, we can pursue that with Mark on the side, so...
I understand. But, but we're not, we're not being rude, and we're not, I'm trying to explain to Richard that they were, your lawyer...
Can I just correct one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
It was not our attorney. It was actually the closing attorney for the bank.
Okay.
And we never were made aware of that until after the fact. So...
I understand.
No, I understand, but you're saying our attorney did it.
But the town can't eat it because your bank made a mistake.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm just correcting the record, because you just stated that it was our attorney that did it, and it was not.
It is your closing attorney.
It was a zoning certificate.
Attorney.
Like a separate third party that does it, but regardless, so we discussed it. We're fine with the curbing. I know that that's important to you, as far as...
Listen, for me, it's what, for the town, important. Nothing for me. If we, if you can, I, I have the board agrees to it, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Well, no, we're, we're fine to add that in, you know, approval to contingent upon having that plan and having it updated with the curbing, the granite curbing that you...
I'd like to ask the commissioner, how you make, how you doing with the parking?
I went over the parking, and the parking is correct, as Mr. Madden has presented.
Okay, very well. That's good to have behind.
Was there any provisions for, is there gonna be a tow truck there for larger vehicles? Like tow trucks and motorhomes and, or anything like that?
I mean, generally, we get motorhomes in pretty quick in Tuesday, just extension inspections. We do have one that's out there now that was abandoned before we even bought the property. It took me a year and a half to find the customer who actually owns it, and they're now making arrangements to get it out.
Just for the record, Christopher, if they, if they get a garage license, automatically they could do towing. They have the right to do it.
Towing for service, right.
Anything. Once they, if they get the license, they could do towing without a permit.
They're not in the towing business, per se.
It doesn't matter, but they could own a tow truck and tow and everything. We go back to the board. What else we still have hanging, Phil?
We, nothing, Mr. Chair, other than if you, if you approve this, I would recommend you include a condition that we just verify soils under the drainage field, like we've done in other applications.
All right, we go back to questions.
I have no further.
Questions, and what do you like to see?
Well, I'd like to see what we discussed with the curbing.
Yeah.
On the radius coming in. Other than that, everything else sounds pretty good.
Jimmy?
I'm, I'm with Richard to a degree. I think we've made a point about the curbing. I think the applicant has indicated a willingness to put the curbing in. I don't know if it's a desire to do it, but I say a willingness. And I'd like to, I'd like to, if we can, if the curbing's the only thing that we're hung up on, I'd like to see us make a positive motion this evening, conditioned upon that curbing.
Christopher?
I agree.
Richard? Richard, you agree?
With Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Akabachi, I agree with Mr. Akabachi.
Okay. And the paving, you guys okay with the way they present it? Troy?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
Chris?
That's back in the, back in the spirit of giving the guy a little bit of a...
Break?
Little bit of a wiggle room, yeah.
Richard, you okay with it?
Yes, I am, Chair.
All right. Anyone in this public, on the public wanna speak against or in favor of this matter? I hear none. Counselor, you wanna do anything before we close? Anything still hanging, Phil? So you only would like to see the soil, soil test?
That's correct. They, they do need to provide stamped plans on the existing additions and the landscaping plan for record, which is fairly typical.
Mr. Madden? Yeah?
I was just gonna speak to the soil test. When they were installing the tank for the, the holding tank for the floor drain, what have you, you know, that was probably a nine-foot excavation that I did witness that material, and I saw that excavation.
Do you have record of it? Do you have a record? Can you stamp us a record?
Other than my testimony before you tonight, I have, I have no other record, no.
Need record?
We, we should, I would recommend you have a record, and it's easy enough to, they, they have to excavate for it anyways. We'll just take a peek at it and confirm.
We need record. No, no, peek or record?
Excuse me. So we should have a record that the soils are consistent, and we can do that by observing it when it's excavated for you.
So we need, we need record, just like you do on a per test.
Wait, I'm missing it. You're saying we can do it when it's excavated?
Yes, I'm recommending.
Excavation's already done?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
For the drainage, the drainage.
And you can do that, you can put, provide that affidavit?
I can provide whatever level of soil testing it's satisfactory to the board, yes.
Okay, so, all right, what else, Phil?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right, Counselor, before we close, what do you have?
Just verification that we would, there are two uses we're seeking, and on the motor vehicle sales, we're seeking eight.
So you need a special permit for use Class II license?
So...
You want a special permit for Class II for eight cars and a, and a repair license?
Exactly.
All right, yeah. Okay, so that's what you need? That's all? Can we close?
So I will make that motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
All right, we have a motion to close.
Second.
This five dash twenty-four by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Christopher? I, myself, Nazir, I closed. All right, we go first on the Class II license. Motion to, I'd like to hear a motion to grant eight cars Class II license.
We're not the license-granting authority. We're just...
Site, special, sorry. I said, motion to grant special permit for eight-car license.
Okay, so moved.
So moved by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor for the site plan for the used car Class II license, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Going to the site plan, the whole site plan.
So we're gonna make a motion to approve, subject to the soil tests. The conditions, and the conditions will include the soil tests already discussed, and a curb, a granite curb and...
No granite, no granite curb and...
At the radius coming in.
And inside, whether Cape Cod berm or concrete, bitumous, our concrete or bitumous concrete for the rest of the project.
You can adjust the plan to reflect that?
We can, we can.
Doing a Cape Cod berm inside the project, it's a machine. You just run it and do it. It's a lot cheaper than Cape Cod berm, and then timber, believe me.
I, other than I believe the timber may have already been installed, that's one of the things that, only because it was existing on the site for a number of years, and they were just being consistent with what existed.
All right.
It needs to change.
All right, let's pull the vote. Yes, Chris?
I say in the public hearing, close.
No, we have, we're just...
We could ask question for clarification. You're right, you're right, but it was just clarification. On a, on a timber, how you feel?
I, it, if they installed new timber in there already, I think I'm okay with that.
Jimmy?
I, I think I'm okay with it as well.
Christopher?
I'm okay with the existing timber.
Richard?
I'm okay.
Okay, carries with three people, so we're okay with timber. Going back at the, along the road and the entrance to change to granite.
That's, my motion is that we approve, we approve with conditions of granite along the highway and the radius coming in, and the soil samples when they do the...
With documented soil test sample.
Correct.
And we will, and we'll be, it'll be built according to plans provided by GF Engineering revised on... Ten?
Ten three twenty-four.
No, when was the revision? Ten two, yeah, okay, ten two twenty-four, yes.
You are expecting new plans.
There's no, enough?
To show curbing and such. So you might wanna hold off on that, because there will be revised plans coming through the office.
Okay, all right. Okay, based, we will grant everything else of, except the curbing plans, based on the plans revised on ten two, October second, two thousand twenty-four. The only thing, we'll be expecting the curbing plans.
Well, it'll be updated with the curbing plan.
Okay, that's, 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 any, any other discussion on that case?
That's my motion. Nope.
Okay, that's the motion by Jim. Do we have a second? Second to grant, do I have?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Carries. Thank you.
You still need to vote on the service, special permit, or are you treating them all as one? Because you voted on the eight cars, but I didn't hear about the motor vehicle service.
No, we voted on the eight cars, and then we...
I, I don't think you did. I would just, maybe if you do it, just for the record.
To be safe. So motor, motor vehicle service, too. Can we get a motion to grant?
Oh, that was, okay. Yes, so moved.
Moved by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It carries. Just inform your client, they need periodic inspection by Allen Major during construction. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, we move to twenty-two dash twenty-four for golf cars, one sixty-one Marion Road.
Thank you, thank you. Let's get these last one all put away before we... Golf cart one is gonna be a withdraw without prejudice, please.
Okay, can we get a motion to withdraw without prejudice, twenty-two dash twenty-four? Can we get, get a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
So moved.
So moved.
By Troy, all in favor, say, do I have a second on, on Troy's?
I'll second.
Second by Christopher. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Richard, do you agree to withdraw without prejudice for the car, five-star golf cart?
I, aye, it carries, four zero zero.
Sorry, I don't, I don't know if you asked anything, because the Zoom was frozen.
Zoom was frozen?
I don't know what you just voted on, so...
Okay.
Everything, it's, it's been frozen. It was frozen for twenty seconds.
All right, Richard, we're voting to withdraw without prejudice for the golf cars, the old Cranberry Chevy on Marion Road. They wanna withdraw the application. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so five zero zero, withdraw. Josh, we need this, this has to be stamped within the fourteen days, and, and the...
Get on it.
The reason wish of the applicant.
Yep.
All right, we move to thirty-two dash twenty-four VMB Property, thirty-one thirty-eight Cranberry Highway. And it is VMB Property. Oh, that's, that's...
Town Tavern.
Town Tavern, okay. All right, sir, public hearing still open. Phil, wanna come forward, please? Still open, your name for the record?
David Newhall, engineer from Crocker Design Group, Two Sharp Street, Hanga Mask.
When did we leave it last time, and how do you, what's the progress you made, you made with, Mr. Phil?
Yeah, so last time, we left it, we had addressed already all of Phil's comments. He had a few comments for conditions. One of them was getting sign-off from the onset fire, which we have received a letter that they are good with our fire truck turning plan. And then additionally was comments from the board regarding the curbing on the site. So we have revised our plans for the curbing to be installed at the entrance of the existing driveway to remain. That will be vertical granite curbing. And then the existing curb cut that is to be closed, that'll be closed with vertical granite curbing. And then at the edge of the parking spaces along Cranberry Highway on the property will all have vertical granite curbing. And then the side street that is not state highway, that will have Cape Cod berm, is our proposal.
That's, that's fine. It should be concrete, but I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it. And did, did you need a variance for the bar outside? You don't need a variance for it, just special site plan, right?
Yeah, it was just site plan for the bar.
Any variances needed? Did they need any variances, Phil?
I don't believe they did, no. I've got it here, if you wanna go check, but I'm pretty sure we were, I think it was site plan was what we were hung on.
One sec, one second.
I think we were... You're right. I think, I think there was some variance, or some special permit necessary or something, because, you know, was it a change of use, or was it the bar, or was it the outside? The bar was originally granted as a temporary thing, where we were...
That's current variances for the bar.
Okay, yeah. So, we just wanna make sure that that outside seating...
It's okay, so nobody can, can say something, okay?
Okay. The bylaws could have required a variance for that. It probably do, and that's probably, we gotta, I can probably go back and find a lot of it.
No, that's fine. We'll, we'll grant it. We have no problem.
Okay, so I make a motion to, oh, we, we gotta...
And do we have anything to correct in there? So we're all in agreement?
We are, we're in agreement, again, with those same recommended conditions to just have it reviewed during construction, like we talked about.
Okay, so you need during construction, you call Phil and Allen Major for inspection every time, every step of the way?
Yep.
So we need those records.
Okay.
You know?
And variance application.
Can we get, any, anyone in the audience wanna speak on this matter, for or against? Hear none? Okay, let's make a motion to close.
So moved.
We have a motion to close public hearing twenty-two, thirty-two dash twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
By Christopher, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Jim, Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It's closed. Okay, what's the wishes now?
It was a use variance that we needed, and the use was the outdoor seating. That's what was...
Okay, very well.
Okay. So now that we're closed, I make a motion that we grant that variance.
We'll, we'll grant the use variance, and we grant the site plan as presented. Okay, do I have a second for Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. So you do accord, Mr., according to your last plan, according to the conditions, okay?
Yep.
And make sure you do by the conditions we talked about, because at the end, we want, you have to come before us, just like the apartments we're here, and if it's not according to the condition, our engineer don't say so. We won't grant it to you. All right, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to a new public hearing, five dash twenty-four thirteen Admiral's Way.
Yeah, that's good. I need, I gotta...
Can you read it for the record?
Well, I got, yeah, okay. Just give me a minute, if you don't mind. I'll read it in in a second. Okay. Sorry, this is which one? This is fifty... This is 5124? Here guys. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October 9, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 51-24 for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621 and 628, and Article 13, Section 1355 and Section 1356 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Kim and Michael.
Ionero.
Ionero, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
You're getting it.
Ionero, it's, it's easy. It's just like, as easy as my name. Care of William Lockwood of Lockwood Architects of Onset, Mass., preparing to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new two-story Victorian dwelling located at 13 Admiral's Way. This appears on assessors map 2 lot 72A in the Onset Village 1 zoning district.
All right, very well. Name and addresses for the.
Good evening, Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, Onset, Tubi West Central Avenue. And with me are Michael and Kim Ionero. And we're here regarding the property at 13 Admiral's Way. The intent of the project is to demolish the existing structure, which is dates 1880, and is like things old, has, has its issues. And after you want to do a few things to the, to an older structure, you, it becomes more provident to tear it down and construct a new structure. So that's what we're proposing to do. The, we have gone to the Historic Commission to seek permission to demolish the structure, the existing structure, and that was received on June 5 of this year. And we will, in your packet there, you'll have a, an existing site plan and a proposed site plan, as well as a, an architectural plan of the proposed structure. And also historic action, the action of the Historic Commission. So the property is, as said, located in the OV1 District of Onset, near the Catholic Church. It's a small lot, 2,751 square feet, and has only 38 feet of frontage. There's no onsite parking currently, but two spaces are supposed to be provided. The new house that's proposed for the site is proposed 1,488 square feet, which is sufficient in size to be able to provide for three, three bed, three small bedrooms and living space. But not, we don't think it overburdens the site with an overly massive structure. Relief is unnecessary for setbacks, but, because we'll be within 10, within the 10 feet on the side and rear, on the sides, rather. But we will be getting further away from the property lines and on both south and north sides. Building coverage, we will actually be reducing slightly. Impervious coverage will be increasing, but still less than the 70% allowed. Floor area ratio, we will be increasing from, but it's a pre-existing non-conforming situation as it is. And looking forward to that. Answer any questions?
All right, very well. All right, board questions, Troy?
I have no questions.
Jimmy?
Nothing's come up yet. I've got questions, but I'm reading.
Okay.
All right, Christopher?
I looked this over online, and I originally looked at the house. I thought it was like this really nice cute little cottage there. And I said, oh, it's a shame to tear that down. But then when I looked at the new plans, it's like, it looks almost the same, the front of it's got that same facade with the, with the porch. So, so I liked it. I'm good, I'm good with this project.
Richard?
Yes, I went by it today, and I agree that if you're going to try and update anything like that, it's not cost-effective unless you tear it down and start again with all the codes. So I am definitely for this project.
Very good. I like you removed the shed. You have more confirming of setbacks, so it's good all the way around. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against? Okay, we hear none. Anything else before we close, sir?
We're good and happy to answer any other questions or if you've gotten done with your reading.
All right. What's, okay, let's get a motion to close.
So we, so moved.
A motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Christopher, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, nazi aye.
Could probably act on this as a special permit.
Okay.
What do you think?
Yeah, sure. It's an existing non-conforming under 1352. If we don't find it such substantially detrimental, we could go as a special permit. And as well as 1356. So relief for 1356 and we go 1354. It shows 1355, we do 1352. It just fits better.
Yeah.
All right, all, okay, so we got a motion to act as a special, as a special permit under these two section of the bylaw. That's by Jim, the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, Rich.
All of the place.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Troy, I mean, Richard?
Aye.
And myself, nazi aye. So it's, it's a special permit. Now, what's the wishes?
Grant by, by. Grant to be followed by the plans submitted by Lockwood Architects.
Okay, we have a motion to grant to be built as presented by Lockwood Architect, as well as the site plan provided to us by, on August 12, 2024, by, by, by a Bremen Surveying Associate. And and the finding is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Christopher, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Carriage, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Board Member.
Thank you, very welcome. 52-24, Guy Lewis, 75 Agawam Lakeshore. All papers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just give us a second.
You guys, the first one's here. Put you, the last one's up.
That's okay.
First in, last out, huh?
Yep.
5224, 5224, we've got the right thing. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October 9, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 52-24 for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article 13, Section 1352, and Section 1353 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Guy R. Lewis and James F. Lewis and others, trustees, care of Derek Lewis, DRL Carpentry of 172 Mont Pontet Street, Halifax, Mass., proposing to raise the house and replace the foundation, keeping the existing footprint on the dwelling located at 75 Agawam Lakeshore Drive. This appears on assessors map 129A, lot 124, in the R130 zoning district.
Very well. Name and address for the record, gentlemen?
Guy Lewis, 45 Pall Mill Road, Halifax.
Derek Lewis, 172 Mont Pontet Street, Halifax.
All right, so what are you guys doing exactly there?
We need to lift, we need a new foundation under the house.
That's all what you're doing, lifting the house?
The house, put a new foundation under it. And while that's getting done, we're going to get the septic system done also.
Okay.
Get it all done in one shot.
All right, board questions, Troy?
No, I don't have any questions.
Jimmy?
So it's a small house, you're going to tear it right down or you're going to lift it up?
No, we're keeping it. It's been.
You're going to raise it up out of the way?
Since 1948, so.
Dig the foundation out from under it?
Yep.
Pour a better foundation under it, put it back down?
Yep. We're here because it's going to be a little bit higher. That's why they, you know, we had to get a special permit for it.
Okay.
You good?
That's all I need to know.
Christopher?
I'm good.
Richard?
No, I went by there today, and I'm good with that. I can see where they got to do what they got to do.
Very well. Okay. Anything else you want to add?
Pretty straightforward.
Doesn't look like a difficult decision. I make a motion, we close the public portion of this hearing. Do we offer the public a chance to talk?
No.
Let's offer that.
Anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against this matter? Sorry, I didn't. So, none, so no, no public comments.
Doesn't look like a difficult decision. I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, nazi aye. Okay, we're going to move for a relief on 1352 and 1353. So if we find that not substantially detrimental, we go as a special permit, otherwise we go as a variance.
I don't find it to be detrimental to the neighborhood, I motion that we make it a special permit.
Okay, we have a motion to grant on 1352 and 1353 for a special permit by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, nazi aye. On the, on the, on a special permit, what's the wishes?
I make the motion to grant.
Motion to grant by Jim, and the, and the findings is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Christopher, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, nazi aye. Carriage, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were, any other business?
No.
One thing, Commissioner?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm used to the old way of technology of getting my information for these things, and I know it's on viewpoint. Is there any way that somebody could send me the link to find out how I find all this information? I mean, I went on it. It shows me the, how, it shows me the application, it shows me what they're doing, but I can't get any of the paperwork. I'm sorry. I don't exceed, I don't excel in a lot of this technology, and I try my damnedest, but I would like some kind of idea.
That's Josh for you.
Yeah, how to make it a little easier, so, you know, volunteers like ourselves don't have to work so hard.
Rich, if you want to come down to my office, I'll walk you through how to do it. I think you'll find.
Yeah, I was, I was there, I was there today around 3:30, and there was nobody in the office, so I, I tried.
I, I appreciate that. Give me a call, and we'll set up a time. I'll make sure I'm in the office.
Oh, maybe I can, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Yes, I had trouble finding it at first, too, but then I ended up finding it. And then I think you posted the second one, the 75, today. I think you posted that this morning, and I was able to find it.
Josh, when's the last time to?
Yeah, just, just for the record, though, some of us don't sit at a computer. I'm out working my butt off all day long by myself, and to come home and to try it, it was very hot.
I do sit at a computer all day.
I appreciate your concern, Rich, and I'll get you through it.
So on that line, Rich brings up a point. If we're, if we're, as board members, looking at this thing on a regular basis, and we're having problems, somebody from the public wants to look. Is there some way we can get the people from the IT department or whoever builds our website or something to make some kind of a? What Rich is looking for is some kind of a cheat sheet?
I don't, a road, a roadmap.
A roadmap, yeah, something that, you know, when you get the, when you get the, when you get the thing from Ikea or Amazon or something like that, or when you buy the new TV, you get two sets of instructions. One's a hundred pages long, written in 20 languages, and it's hard to follow. And the other one's a little, you know, fold-out thing with a few pitches, first step, do this, do this, and can we have the?
Let me interrupt you for a sec.
Easy one?
I, I have that process already set up on the conservation page. I'll make sure it's posted to the planning and zoning pages as well. It's a step-by-step instruction on how to use viewpoint and access projects.
That, I, I, I appreciate it. I thank you, and I thank Richard for bringing it up.
You know what? For conservation, I take it one step forward. If you look at the agenda, all the items are hyperlinked. So you go to the agenda, you click on the project, brings you right to viewpoint.
Well, I don't look at anything online. I just come here and say yes to everybody.
Understood.
Josh, what's the deadline to bring something to planning board to go under warrant? To change things?
For Fall Town meeting? It's already passed.
All right, for next time, we have time, right?
Yeah.
We'd like to, something, there's a little bit of conflict between 1355 and 1352. The Commissioner, he'll, he'll explain it to us. It's kind of contradict itself a little bit. This is how I understand it, but he'll explain it better. He knows a lot more about it than me. And we should probably.
Address the conflict.
Address it, maybe we'll be kind enough, the planning board, to put it on the board, on the, on the warrant. I'll, I'll leave it to, let Mr. Turner, the Commissioner, explain it to us, how the, what's, what, what's the conflict?
1355, lawfully pre-existing non-conforming single or two-family residential structure may, by special permit, be demolished and replaced with a new structure on the same site, provided that the Zoning Board of Appeals determines. And there's four notes. The issue is that a lot of times that come up is note three. The replacement structure will not intensify any of the following existing non-conformities: building coverage, impervious coverage, a setback encroachment. So.
That's 1355.
1355.
So you guys got it?
No.
You didn't get it?
When I first came here, two and a half years ago, I looked back how the previous I looked back how the previous Commissioner was citing these houses that are being torn down, and it was always cited thirteen fifty-five. And then if they thought it was going to be detrimental to the neighborhood, require a variance, would be thirteen fifty-six. And I've noticed this for the past two, three months, and I finally spoke to the Chair and brought this up. There is a conflict.
It's, so basically, it's a variance, not, even if we don't think it's substantially detrimental.
Should be doing a variance.
No matter what. There is no special permit.
No, no. You could have a special permit if you are not intensifying any of the following existing nonconformities.
That's the problem.
Or the replacement structure will not create any new nonconformities.
So you get that?
So they're going footprint for footprint, square foot for square foot. It's a special permit. If they're making it taller, wider, anything, it's a variance.
Right, it should go to thirteen fifty-six. Thirteen fifty-two, you can't use because it says a proposed addition, alteration, or extension. So tearing down a building and rebuilding it, I don't think, I know it doesn't fall under.
I suggest-
Doesn't fall under that.
We eliminate thirteen fifty-two, fifty-five, and add tearing down and rebuild to, I don't think we, yeah, and add down, tearing down and rebuild to thirteen fifty-two.
We're living with it for at least another six months because it's too late to get things-
I understand, but thirteen fifty-five maybe says, if they don't, if they don't want to lose thirteen fifty-five, like people will be looking thirteen fifty-three, thirteen fifty-six was thirteen fifty-five. Maybe says, say, same conditions thirteen fifty-two, maybe? I don't know. That's you, Josh, on Ken, to write it. I recommend we fix it.
So your recommendation is to change Note Three to allow for an increase in any of those?
If we believe it's not detrimental.
If you believe it's not-
We should, because in Warehams, a lot of houses needs to be torn down. And for the people to prove a hardship for a variance, it's tough. Half of Warehams needs to be torn down. And most lots, as you know, I mean, I know you don't live in town, Crumies, Swiss Beach, Agawam, Lakewood, Parkwood, Lake Shore, they're all small lots. So these are all existing, non-conforming. And these, most of these foundations back then, they were built on nothing. So eventually, these people are going to tear it down and build it properly. And I hate to see these people go through a variance. I'm not worried about this board, but for future, I'm sure we're not going to be here forever, this board. A new board might go by exactly what the book says, and most of the people will be in trouble. So that's something we should write and fix and address. Do the board agrees? Do you agree?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, for the sake of the people, for the future.
So we might hold a special town meeting in January, so at least it's a little quicker. But we'll get something put together. I'll bring it to the zoning board.
I don't see a problem with this board when it comes to us, but we'd like it fixed, if possible.
Is it, I don't know, I've read it and reread it. Is it broken, or is it just awkward to read?
It's tricky.
Yeah, I get it.
It throws you off.
It does. I'm not saying it doesn't, but, you know, if you read it enough times, you can understand it.
Yeah.
What do we?
Let him play.
Say, and how are we going to fix it? How are we going to change it, is my point.
Well, you're going to write that like thirteen fifty-two, pretty much.
Thirteen fifty-two.
See how thirteen fifty-two says addition, alteration, everything? When you start, you're going to write the other one, tearing down and rebuilding, and all the things, all the, I mean, the-
Hey, if you guys think you've got that in language, go for it.
I don't think it's correct at the moment.
Yeah, okay, then do what, you know, I say-
If someone, someone could come and-
Do you have, do you have ideas of how to fix the language?
I think the Chair has the right idea to just add the language to thirteen fifty-two.
And what we do, eliminate thirteen fifty-five?
Yeah, I didn't know we were going to discuss this, but just-
We could say, not to confuse people, like a misprint's unmissing, we say eliminate it, but at the request of planning, zoning, whatever. So people know we did in purpose eliminate thirteen fifty-five. That make sense?
Well, if, if you're going to eliminate thirteen fifty-five, you just eliminate it, and you leave thirteen fifty-five, and you type in its place, intentionally omitted. And it remains thirteen fifty-five.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But Jim, what the Chair wants to do is allow that the people could act under a, the board could act under a special permit. If we eliminate thirteen fifty-five, you're going to, the only place you could act would be as a variance.
See, there is-
We will add the language to thirteen fifty-two, tearing down and rebuilding. And then you could do it.
And that still gives them a chance to do it under a special permit?
Correct.
If we added thirteen fifty-two.
I'm all for taking words out of the bylaw that are unnecessary or redundant. How long is a-
General, you here for something? We missed, or you just watching? Good.
Here for entertainment value.
I hope you enjoyed the show.
Commissioner?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
I received, I received a phone call today. Just curious if we can talk about it. On Michael Drive, there was a gentleman down on the right-hand side at the end that wanted a pair to pair. And I got a call saying that he's gone around it and gone to the state, and he's going to try and put it in. Is that something that they can do inside of the two years? That he got denied?
Could you repeat the question?
So Mike, there's neighbors to, down on Michael Drive, there's a guy that tried to put the pair in, and Conservation said no, and all this other. He's circulating papers again that they're going through the state, and they're going to be putting it in. And I, and I just, they called me and wanted to know how they could because we denied them. They can't go for two years. But apparently, he's going over to this, above to the state board or something? So I'm just trying to get clarification.
I don't know anything about that, Richard.
Yeah, so apparently, they're still working at it, and he's going to put a pair, and he's got lawyers and everything. And they're sending petitions just to certain neighbors, not everybody.
All right, I'll explain. Richard, let me explain. Let me remind, it's a lot somebody has on-
Vacant lot, right.
Vacant lot. They wanted to put a dock. They came to us, we said no.
Oh, is that one that, there was all wetlands and everything?
Yeah.
On Black Valley Road?
Not necessarily, well, I don't know. But bottom line-
Yes, that's it.
You can't do it without a structure or a house, a dwelling.
Okay. Principal structure to have an accessory.
Right, so if he's going to the state, Richard, if the state gives him a permit, he could do it because he'll, the state overrule us. But I don't think the state will give him a permit. Go ahead, Josh, you want to say so.